Thank you. Welcome. And thank you for attending this meeting of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public and there are no items that contain exempt information. However, in your in your PACS, it does say that one item has a bit that is restricted, but we'll talk about it in a minute. The the meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council website. And it is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Please, can I request that mobile telephones and any other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? And there is no fight test planned for this afternoon. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff and our assembly point is to the square. And I will now ask each committee member in turn to introduce themselves and I will start on my left.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Steve Ayres. I'm a councillor for Graves Park Ward.
Afternoon councillor Sophie Thornton for Beechworth and Greenall Ward and deputy chair of the policy committee.
Afternoon everyone councillor Julie Groukett Stocksprience of the Don Ward.
Councillor Matt Dwyer councillor Burnley Ward.
Councillor Ruth Milson councillor Inkludson Crossport Ward.
I'm councillor John Wright and I represent Walkley Ward.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Laura McLean, I represent Walkley Ward and I'm group spokesperson for this committee.
Thank you. Apologies for absence, we've received apologies from councillor McRooney and councillor Wright is here to substitute for him. And we have apologies from councillor Sapwell, who sends his apology a bit late, he's unwell, so there was no time for a sub for him. So item two is exclusion of press and public. As I've mentioned, in our PAC, there is a note on item 15 that says that one of the appendices is restricted, but since we checked with that in our pre-meeting on Monday, and that information was already in the public domain, so that item is no longer restricted. So we will not need to send people out of the room at that point. Item three declarations of interest. Are there any members that have any interest on any of the items on the agenda? Councillor Dwyer.
Yes, so on the item nine, I have a friend who works for Randabout, but it won't affect my decision on this.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. So we'll make a note of that just so it goes in the minutes. And item four is the minutes of the previous meeting. Those are on page 23 of the PAC, if you have the printed version. Are colleagues happy that this is a true record of the meeting that we had on the 18th of September? I will go through each page just to see if there are any materialising or any errors that people want to point out. So I've got page 11. Did I say 23? I said, I'm going to say page 11, sorry about that. Page 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20 and 21. So our colleagues happy for me to initial and sign the minutes book, thank you. So do I initial every page? Rachel will be happy. Before we move on, I just realised that I didn't ask the officers to introduce themselves, so I'm going to do that now. Sherry, do you want to start?
Yes, I'm Sherry Grant, I'm assistant director for legal services.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Catherine Bunton, I'm the assistant director for commissioning and partnerships and I'm here today for Alexis Chapel, the director of adult care and wellbeing.
I'm Fiona Martinez, I'm a principal democratic services officer.
And most importantly, we have Alan doing all the tech. So that's brilliant, sorry I've lost my... Yep, thank you. Item five is public petitions, questions, petitions for statements, we have received none. So we'll move on to item six, which is members' questions. Again, we did not receive any within the timeframe. So we can move on to item seven, which is the work programme, which is on page 25 of the PAC. Fiona, are there any notes for the work programme or there's nothing really?
So there aren't any significant changes and it's just a case of obviously inviting members, as we do each time, to contribute to the work programme in any way they see fit. So if there's any items that you think should be added, feel free to raise those now.
You can also do that, obviously in our weekly briefings, which we do regularly. So are people happy to approve the work programme as it is? Keeping in mind that is a working document that changes quite often. So we're going to go on to item eight, which is city-wide dementia strategy. And I think Jo is one of the people who is presenting. Thank you. So this is on page 35 of the PAC and can I ask officers who are present to introduce themselves and their job description for those who don't know you yet?
Good afternoon, I'm Jo Pass, I'm assistant director for living and aging well in adult care and wellbeing.
Hi everyone, I'm Liz Tooke, I'm the programme manager and transformation delivery manager for MHLDDA at South Yorkshire ICB.
So our vision has and continues to be making sure people who are living with dementia are supported to live life to their full potential. And our plans have and continue to be based on what people living with dementia and those directly working with those living with dementia have said what is important to them. In 2023, we started the process of developing our new dementia strategy for which we're seeking your endorsement today and approval. And I wanted just to outline a little bit about the process we followed. Because what we did was we went to, it's DCG, it's the dementia strategic implementation group. And that is a collective group of partners from primary, secondary, commissioning, voluntary sector who come together with a shared commitment to delivering the best outcomes for people living with dementia. We asked all our partners there to review what was working well and what wasn't working well. We then conducted an extensive survey with those living with dementia and those working directly. We had 184 responses to that survey. And that told us a really interesting picture. It told us that some things have really improved since the start of our first dementia strategy in 2019. One being that the number of memory catheters has significantly increased from three to over 40. And it's also, but there are areas that are of concern and real challenge to people. One of those being transport services in the city, another being how long people are waiting for diagnosis. We also picked up that we are not as responsive as we need to be to the diverse communities we have in Sheffield. The survey also gave us a picture of inconsistency. So it told us that where people could get access to advice and information through their dementia experience, where they could, where they were working with staff that were trained in understanding dementia, it was hugely positive. When those things were missing, it was of real concern. And that survey formed the basis of the nine commitments. A range of partners from adult care and wellbeing, commissioning, voluntary sector, primary and secondary sector then drafted each of the key commitments that you see before you today. We then went back out again with those drafts, which I call marking our homework. We went back through SHINDIG, which is an organisation that allows those living with dementia to review how services are working. We went back through all our strategic information group partners. And we also went out to a range of organisations working with different communities in Sheffield and asked them to review our commitments. We took on board their feedback to develop the strategy that you see before you today.
Thank you. So just a bit more about the achievements within the strategy. Within the strategy and the report that you will have seen, a number of achievements from the 2019 to 2024 strategy have been listed and Jo touched upon those in relation to the feedback from people living with dementia and their carers as well. And these have included the community dementia services that Jo has talked about, also successes in increasing the number of people who have an annual review, so people with dementia who have an annual review with their GP as well, which is about 84% now and has gone up significantly over the last few years. There's also been training for people who work with people with dementia as well and support for carers. And we know now that 30% of people who are supported by Sheffield Carer Centre are people who care for somebody living with dementia. That's really as a result of the work that all the partners that Jo has talked about have done in raising awareness about the support that people can get. We've also been able to recruit two admiral nurses within Sheffield Teaching Hospitals who are working across health and social care to support people who admitted to hospital to be able to be discharged as soon as they are medically well and to be supported and to then go home where possible and with their onward support as well. There are also a lot of challenges, as we know, around supporting people to live their best lives with dementia. And again, this is reflected within the strategy and with each of the commitments, where we've talked about what will be different as a result from the strategy as well. And again, building on what we've already covered, these issues around long waiting times for diagnosis, people having longer hospital, likely to having longer hospital stays if there's somebody with dementia, the need to do more to support our diverse communities. And that includes both ethnic minority groups, but also people with a learning disability who are more likely to have dementia but less likely to have a diagnosis with dementia, people who are deaf and who have dementia and other communities. We know also there are challenges around supporting people with dementia and their carers who may go into crisis and experience crisis situations and that's something that we focused on within the strategy. As we said, there are nine commitments in the strategy and you've got those in your papers and in the document, so I won't list all of those out now. But really, just to note that these cover the whole range of experiences that people will experience and those supporting them will experience. So everything from supporting a dementia-friendly Sheffield to somebody's diagnosis to early support, support for carers and so on, is included within those commitments. And we've also included a focus around preventing, reducing or delaying the onset of dementia. And that's really with that recognition that at least four out of 10 cases of dementia can be prevented, reduced or delayed. And often this is for the same reason or usually the same reasons for cardiovascular health as well. So there is a lot more that we can do as a city to be able to achieve that as well. Just to note as well, we will be monitoring the strategy as well and one of the recommendations in this report is that we will feedback and report back to yourselves on this as well. And we've also built in similar governance and checkpoints within the internal organisations' structures for the partners within the strategy as well. We've mentioned about the dementia strategy implementation group. It's also that we'll be monitoring and supporting from a partnership perspective of the strategy as well. And it's also important to note that because a number of the commitments within this strategy are led by individual organisations, that those organisations, so Sheffield Teaching Hospitals, the ICB, et cetera, the council will also be monitoring those actions internally as well through a range of methods, including contract management and so on. We'll also be working with and strengthening the approach we have for working with experts by experience and family carers as well. And that's something, as we've described with you already, but we recognise that there's always more that can be done around that. Just to finally note as well, what we've done so far over the previous years with the dementia strategy implementation group is not to try to cover every single point in the strategy all at once, because we know that's not realistic. Whereas there are aspects of this that are almost business as usual and will be ongoing. There's also project work and improvement work that we need to have a particular focus on at any one time to be able to really move things forward. So we try to take an agile implementation approach to review where we're at, at least annually and on an ongoing basis, take stock of what's going well and what else needs to be done and prioritise what needs to be done to focus on that.
Can I just say that the data on how many people are living with dementia in Sheffield varies between 6,300 and 7,300, depending on whether you're looking at primary care or poppy data. The one thing that is consistent is we know that's a significant underestimation and we know the numbers are increasing. Within our strategy, we don't want to just create a dementia-friendly city, we want Sheffield to be proud to be a dementia-friendly city. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jo and Liz, for presenting, but also for the report. And I think, I said this before, I mean, it's so well put together, it's really easy to read. I really like the, I don't know why, my eyes really like the way it's set out. But also I think it's the way it's been, for me, I just want to say a huge thank you because you've worked on this in exactly the way that we always say that we should work, which is work cooperatively in partnership, but also co-producing with people who actually have dementia and their families. So thank you very much from me on how the whole thing has come together. Are there any questions from members? Councillor Ayres.
Yeah, a quick one. Just to add to Andrew's comments, I do welcome this, it's a very comprehensive, well-written report. And I like the section of what will be different. Following on from that, how will we measure how we have become different?
So some of that will be through the monitoring that I've just described, so we'll have very clear plans for what we will be expecting to be happening and measuring that through the implementation group internal monitoring and so on. The what will be difference is the beginning of the implementation plan. And there will be some metrics attached to that. So for example, whether a waiting time, we're already monitoring and will be monitoring that those waiting times are going down, where there's a need to diagnose more people or to identify if more people already have dementia and show their diagnosis, obviously we'll be monitoring that and so on. So there's a number of metrics that we will be able to report back on when we come back to this group in more detail that will help us keep track of the data around it as well as some of the key milestones where we've really been able to move things on as well. And obviously the feedback and engagement with people with lived experience is going to really come to that as well.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. And just to echo what councillor Jentz says, it's just great to see how much people with lived experience have been involved in developing the strategy. At the very end of the strategy, you talk about how, it talks about how you're going to continue to involve people with lived experience in the ongoing delivery of the strategy and that will be formalised and strengthened throughout 2025. And I just wondered if you could share a little bit what that would look like, please? That'd be great.
We will continue to go to SHINDIG, to continue to ask for their engagement and their expertise in advising us, particularly where there's areas of challenge, that's what we've done. We will continue to work with, through all the networks of those organisations that work directly with people with lived experience, just to try and make sure that we really get their voice. I think an area for challenge is that we would very much like to really develop the strategy implementation group to include those with lived experience and their carers. But we're really trying to find a way in which we can do that meaningfully, that it isn't become tokenistic. This is a devastating diagnosis, it is obviously a progressive illness. But at the same time, people have a lot of living to do with dementia and our role is about making sure that they live as well as they possibly can. So I think in all honesty, we've got those mechanisms to continue to engage with people, continue to take how we think we're doing with our implementation back to them to understand that. But we would like to go further in the implementation group and the governance, we just need to find a way of making that meaningful.
Councillor Dwyer.
Yeah, thank you. So reading the report, it was clear and it was, it makes sense, but it was new to me not being from this area, is that people from vulnerable groups are at greater risk of dementia, which I sort of assumed it was genetics, so that was interesting to learn. This led me to sort of want to know, do we have data for Sheffield and how it's compounded by poverty and ethnicity and do we have data for that? And then that led to the follow-up question of then, how do we address that of, does the move to prevention model in health provision and then also the city's growth strategy, would that feed in and hopefully reduce the rate of dementia in the city and also the severity of dementia? And is that something that can be impacted? And then a quick one was just on whether literature and researches in academia has changed since 2019 and has that fed into going forward and how we provide care and services for people in the city?
I'm sure that was a multiple six questions at least. Okay, so yes, literature and research change and evolve. I think we are really interested in terms of the technology offer for people living with dementia going forward and we will continue to build with that. We have regular contributions from colleagues that do research in the university and we're trying very much to try and connect that research to the practice of all our organisations. Just to come back to your earlier points, and I'll bring Liz in as well. So our reduce the risk of dementia was written by a colleague in public health and we work closely with them on that. We recognised, I think there needs to be a maturity in the narrative around dementia in our health system. So we're very familiar with things like, oh, you're keeping your blood pressure low, that's really good for your cardiovascular health, that helps to reduce the risk of dementia. And it's those kinds of making sure that all those conversations happen and count that we need to develop and progress. In terms of differing communities and how we reach those, just, that's such a broad question, but one of the things that is really clear is we have to get into those communities, rather than the communities come to us, we need to get into the communities to work with them about how we can support those at greater risk or those living with dementia and their carers.
Yeah, just to add a few things. So you asked if do we have the data to be able to support this? We have some data, but there's, again, there's more that we can do than that. You know, so for example, we have data that shows the dementia registers by each GP practising Sheffield, it's anonymised data, but we also have ethnicity data cross-reference with that as well. But also there are lots of gaps in data, both in individual data sets, ethnicity but being one of those where we only have partial data in that instance as well as more widely. Because reducing the risk and preventing dementia, a lot of that is linked around the risk factors connected with poverty. We do have a lot of data around poverty that we can cross-reference with dementia. So I think we have some of that and we have used some of that, but there is more that we can do. And that's another example, I think, of the monitoring that we talked about, that we'll be able to look at more as we go ahead. The other thing that's been useful when we've been looking at the strategy is we've carried out a full equality impact assessment as well. And that was really helpful, for example, in identifying things such as the impact on women around dementia. I think it's quite well known that women are more likely to have dementia than men. And there's an assumption that that's just, for example, that's just because women tend to live longer. But again, from the research that has been done over recent years and from the data we have, we know that it's not just to do with that, it's to do with, for example, women often stop exercising at an earlier age regularly than what men do. So there's lots of that data there, but there's a job to do to really keep on top of it and make sure that we're using it in a really effective way.
Thank you. I'm going to take both questions, councillor Milson and councillor Groukett, together and then I'll ask you two and I may have a little question myself at the end.
Thank you Chair. I haven't got questions on every agenda item today, I'm kind of panicking. I don't think every agenda item is going to take this long, but I'm just really, really interested in this one. I'm guessing a bit, but I would sense that very few people would have much knowledge of what lifestyle choices or circumstances could contribute to the likelihood of developing dementia. It was a bit of an eye-opener to me in the report to see this. I went, whoa, hang on a minute, there are things I could do to, you know, to prevent dementia and I'm a bit aware, but I'm not very educated. And the types of activity you could choose to adopt to look after your own cognitive health as well and how important that is at various stages of your life. And I wondered whether you might look at developing a kind of self-care information pack that would educate and encourage the right kind of behaviours, maybe working with public health on that. I think that might be quite a proactive thing to do in terms of reduction and prevention. I would certainly appreciate it. And then how you might actually get that out to people. And on the same sort of topic about getting information out, I'm wondering how good we are at the social prescribing side in terms of, do all the people in the system know how to signpost? Do they all have all the information? You know, so does everyone who comes into contact professionally or via family contacts with a person who lives with dementia, do they all have that information? And do carers know what's available really locally to people, for example? And what kind of platforms and channels could be considered to improve that knowledge sharing? So community channels that might be used to get more of that out there, because there aren't that many people that read council stuff. So probably need some more community-based channels.
I'll take, sorry, I'll take councillor Groukett first.
Thank you Chair. A number of points, some of it's building on what Matt said earlier. I think firstly, thank you for the document. I think the commitments are a really good starting point for us as a council in terms of making sure that we get this process right and we do start to educate and inform and look at how we deal with people who are living with dementia. I think it's also probably prudent to say a big thank you to the voluntary sector across the city who do some magnificent work, certainly in my own world. We've got some really, really good dementia groups that are on completely with volunteers who are doing some brilliant work. And, you know, month on month, the numbers of people who are attending is growing and that's not only important for the people who are living with dementia, but for the people who are caring for them as well. So I think it's really important to mention that. A number of points for me, we talk in the report about, you know, we're striving to get the annual reviews to 100%, but we're only 85%. So is there a certain group within people who've got dementia who we aren't hitting at the moment? Is there a particular issue with that? What can we do to make sure that we are getting to the 100% as soon as we possibly can? Because I do think that, you know, that is really, really important. People living with dementia, we all know it is very degenerative, so an annual review is really important to make sure that they are getting the best care and they are being looked after appropriately. So I'd like to understand a little bit more about that. Certainly, everyone who gets the diagnosis has to go through the Sheffield Memory Clinic. So picking up on Matt's point in relation to ethnicity, have we looked at mapping the information we've got with the information that they've got to look to see? That we are making sure that regardless of your ethnicity, we are dealing with you and we are dealing with you appropriately to make sure that you have got the best possible care. Because certainly, looking at the information from the, in the report from the people who completed the survey, it is very worrying about, you know, that it's predominantly white British people who filled in the form. So we are, we have got a gap there that I think we do need to make sure we understand how we are going to close that. Thank you Chair.
Sorry, before you answer, can I also add to what councillor Dwyer and councillor Milson said about prevention? Because again, having had experience, one close to me with dementia, like, you know, early on... Because again, having had experience one close to me with dementia, like, you know, early onset dementia a long time ago, who are not with us anymore. It's only very recent that this thing about it's not actually just genetics. It's also, you'd said four in 10 can be prevented or delayed. And I think if you think, if we think about our prevention agenda in terms of, you know, public health at the council, public early intervention and prevention agenda, I wonder why it is not widely in the public domain that there are things that we can do to delay the onset of dementia or even prevent it. And I think it's the narrative, probably it's a national narrative that needs to change around it. But what can we do locally? I mean, I will encourage colleagues to just talk about it in all the various bits that we we go to. But I would like to see something from me, from this strategy, where we actually make a commitment to the prevention agenda and say we will have, you know, by the end of this strategy, we will have out there, people will be more informed, both, you know, family members and the general public about that you can prevent not just cardiovascular disease or by, you know, looking after your blood pressure and exercising and, you know. I think it's really important that we change that narrative because it's not, you know, if two, three of us are, I mean, I wasn't surprised because I'd kind of already read some papers on it. But if people are very attuned to the kind of, you know, to, we work with the NHS on a regular basis. But this is never on, you know, when we talk about prevention, this is never mentioned in those meetings.
I'll bring Liz in to talk a little bit both around the prevention and also about the annual reviews. I just wanted to cover a few points really. I mean, this is a strategy of our commitments as an officer responsible for delivering what I see as a ginormous job list that we need to do for the city and that's fine. And so a lot of what you're asking and querying absolutely resonates with me. So in terms of carers, I think there is an ask for more specialist carers advice for people that live in with dementia. We also have an ask that that carers have access to training around dementia. So we know that's something that people are asking for. I'm going to quote a carer I spoke to in relation to about the information and advice. One of the challenges is the progressive nature of it is you may be connected to a service. And this is absolutely the right service at this point in time. But your needs change and progress and then you want to, you access this service and that's right. You don't want to go somewhere here because it's terror, it could be terrifying. But at each stage of that journey, it's different. So you move through different services and that is correct. But you need some way of accessing information all the way through. We know on the Sheffield Directory, we have a really, you know, we have a good, we have a lot of information on there. But that isn't for everybody and it isn't reaching everybody and we know that. So we need to look at it. I think you're absolutely right in terms of the, and I mentioned it earlier about the maturity of the narrative. Because it feels like we're only just getting into, and I'm not minimising in any way how devastating the diagnosis of dementia is. But we're only just getting into those discussions as a society about how you can reduce the risk of dementia and also how you can, how you live well with dementia. So I think there is something absolutely about that. The other thing is that I just wanted to mention, because this has come through from lots of different communities, is about the stigma of having a dementia or fearing that you have dementia. And actually, one of the feedback is we do need to talk about it. We need to talk about the services. We need to talk much more about what is out there. And that helps to tackle some of the stigma that's there as well.
Yeah, thank you. Just to pick up on a few of the last points, those points there then. Talked about memory service data and did we map that in terms of ethnicity with the GP data? Again, we've done some of that. We've had survey data from memory service previously and looked at that, at the representation of that. And there is more that we know we want to do around that. But there are challenges, as I've mentioned, around the quality of data that there is in GP records around ethnicity. It's not just a dementia thing, unfortunately, it's a historical issue. So there are some challenges, there are some challenges there, but it is something, it's one of our resources that we've got to look at that. And I think we also mentioned about the percentage of people who responded to the, from the strat, to the survey from minority ethnic communities. I think a few things, two things around that. One is that it's important to recognise that the, because it's mostly older people, not all older people. We talked about young onset dementia, but mostly older people who are experiencing having dementia and their carers. And so we'd actually only be looking at about 6% of people from ethnic minority, of people in Sheffield would be from ethnic minority communities in that age range. So from that point of view, the survey feedback wasn't very low. But we do, that isn't to say that there isn't lots of work to do around getting that qualitative feedback from different communities. We know there really is as well. I think it's a really good idea around having a self care pack and so on. And I actually really welcome these discussions around prevention because we've done work on it, public health, we've done work on it. We've had a few times, we've had a Sheffield Dementia Month that's tied in with with National Dementia Weeks and so on. And we've actually focused on prevention as part of those and comments around that. But we know that we need to do more of that. Obviously, it takes the time and resources of colleagues to do that, so that can be challenging as well. But I think these discussions are really helpful and to have the support of, you know, of yourselves around the prevention agenda is very helpful as well. Just finally, just picking up as well around the VCS as well. Definitely agree with that, you know, the work that we've done with across the dementia strategy, it's it's all about the voluntary and community sector. And there are a lot of services that are funded by by the council to support people with dementia that are in the VCS and to a lesser extent funded by the ICB. But they just do so much, you know, and achieve so much really. So, you know, yeah, definitely from our point of view, this isn't a council strategy or a health strategy. It's a Sheffield strategy as well. So, yeah, I think that's the main points from me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So without further ado, we have two recommendations for this report. They are on page 36. The Adult Health and Social Care Committee has recommended to, one, approve the 2025-2030 dementia strategy. Number two, request that the Director of Adult Health and Social Care provides the committee with updates on the progress in delivering upon the commitment, commitments made on an annual basis. Are members happy to approve those? Brilliant. Thank you so much. And we go on to item nine, which is, sorry, Changing Futures Programme and Strategy to Tackle Inequalities and Multiple Disadvantage. This is on page 107. And if colleagues could introduce themselves, please, at the beginning.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Sam Martin. I'm one of the Heads of Commissioning in the Integrated Commissioning and Public Health at part of the council.
Afternoon. My name is Justine Adams, one of the strategic commission managers in Sam's team.
I should say as well that we were hoping to be joined this afternoon by Lewis Goodyear, who's heads up the Co-Production Service at the Changing Futures. But he can't make it today, so he's asked us to send his apologies. So I'll be reasonably brief in the introductions, I guess, to his conscious of the time, Chair. But I guess this is again, a fairly comprehensive paper and and strategy for the committee to hopefully approve today. This is focused on a sort of smaller cohort of people in the city who are some of our most vulnerable residents, people who are living with severe and multiple disadvantage, which is a combination of living with mental health problems, addictions, it might be rough sleeping, affected by exploitation and abuse and involved in the criminal justice system. For a few years, we've had a programme called Changing Futures, which we've been back to the committee a couple of times with over the course of the programme with updates on. So the committee's reasonably well up to speed with what's been happening with that programme. It was funded by distinctive government funding, which ends at the end of this year. So what we've been doing as a partnership and as a service has been trying to turn the learning from the time limited programme into something that's a more sustainable set of strategic objectives for the city, for both for the council, but for the partners in the NHS, probation, the police and in our thriving voluntary sector as well to kind of support this kind of work going forward. So the the paper is accompanied by a draft version of the strategy, which hopefully we can sign up to as a council today and then other partners can sign up to in their own right. But we're also asking for the permission of the committee to work on a commissioning strategy, commissioning plan for, to rearrange some of our existing services around vulnerable adults, taking into account the learning we've had from the Changing Futures Programme and do that over the next 18 months, so that we end up with a new service model that supports the objectives that we set out in the strategy in terms of supporting people in a more joined up way, making better use of data and really involving people with lived experience in the development and delivery of services. I should say, maybe Chair, before I wind up, that we're watching really closely the, well, we're not watching right now, but we'll be keeping a really close eye on the budget announcements this afternoon. Like lots of people in the council will be watching that really closely because we're hopeful that there might be some indication of some future funded that will support some of this work from government. Obviously, in terms of drafting our report, we've not been able to incorporate any of that stuff at this point. But we have put in the report that if there are any further announcements, we can reassess what we're doing in terms of spending plans as we go forward and take account of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions around this? And I have a very, very quick question myself actually, because obviously we're talking about a very small court of people, but they are amongst the most vulnerable in the city and they have one of, if not the lowest life expectancy. I think the the average life expectancy for people in this course is 39. Am I correct? Something like that.
I think it's like sort of mid 40s around there. So really, yeah, a lot lower than the average population.
And in terms, you know, in terms, but they are people who need, have very complex lifestyles and cases, et cetera. And I was just wondering, how will the consultation that we have at the moment about the PCSOs? So the public space orders that are out for consultation? Because lots of that cohort will probably be people that could be affected by those. How do you think that is going to play out in terms and is it going to have any effect on them?
So I might let Justine answer a bit more closer to the operational side of things in a moment. But I think generally speaking, the services working with people in the city centre, particularly where they're facing multiple disadvantage, are only quite wary of things like the PSPOs. I think the worry is that they might move people on, so it kind of makes the city centre look a bit better. But the people who've got the problems have just moved to another area of the city or dispersed, which makes it then sometimes harder for support services to get to them because they know where they are if they're in town. However, having spoken to some of the officers involved with the PSPO, we've had some assurances that some of it is about the way it's implemented on the ground rather than the PSPO itself. So I think if if part of the implementation of the PSPO means that people can be encouraged to get to the support that they might need, then that can be a good thing. So I think some of the, some of the nuances are in how it's implemented rather than the PSPO in itself, if that makes sense.
No, nothing's wide. I think I think Sam's mentioned sort of the nuances as a really good partnership working around city centre and particularly around rough sleeping. And in terms of the the communication between those teams when it comes to like a PSPO, you know, the the conversations around what that, what support that individual needs is well and truly kind of happening on the ground. So, yeah, just reiterate what Sam said in terms of the nuance, if they are being applied for and given that that's that's done with a lot of consideration as to other options before it gets to that point. So, yeah.
Brilliant, thank you. So I think we have three recommendations on this. They are on page 109. So the first one is to approve the new citywide strategy to support people facing severe and multiple disadvantage. And number two is to approve a recommissioning process to organise existing and where available new resources into a reshaped service model to provide direct support to vulnerable adults, including people with severe and multiple needs from 2026, in line with the principles and objectives of the strategy. And finally, number three, approve the development by officers of an interim resource and delivery plan for 2026 to enable key services developed through the Changing Futures programmes to continue within the existing budgets whilst the recommissioning process recommended above takes place. So are people happy with those? Brilliant, thank you so much. And we'll see you back, we'll see you back with the updates later on. Thank you. So we are moving on to item 10, which is Adults Working With People Delivery Plan. And we have Janet delivering this for us. Thank you, Janet.
Hello, yes, I'm Janet Curran, the Operations Director in Adult Care. This is the third time I've brought this Working With People Delivery Plan to the council, to this committee. So basically, what the Working With People Delivery Plan focuses on is is the first part of the CQC assurance. And it's our mechanism of making sure that we're giving a robust response to that. And basically, it covers the the delivery of our care requirements relating to assessments, reviews and individuals' wellbeing. Part of what I've done in this report and the important part of it really is around performance. And I've picked up, picked out some things specifically to mention. One of the things I've mentioned is first contact, which is our front door. And I think it's an interesting fact that, you know, the most recent figures we have show that only 12% of things that came through our, you know, contacts that came through our front door ended up in a care act assessment, which is, seems quite a low number, doesn't it? Of all the people who contact us, only 12% end up in us undertaking a full care act assessment. And I think that's for two reasons. One of those is we do a really good job of preventative work, so getting people in, doing the things they need to do to help them remain independent. And making sure we signpost them to the right place. But I think the other issue we've got is we get a lot of contacts through our front door, which probably should go somewhere else in the first place. Now, it's fine because we make sure people get to the right place. But our resource would be better used if if we were able to focus on working with the people directly who need us. That's currently being dealt with and I'm part of this, some customer experience work across the council. So that's looking at how things come into us, who, where they get headed off at various places, but also improving the digital offer, which I think is quite important. We've probably got a lot of people out there who are quite happy to self serve and look at situations and therefore using the resource we've got for the people who are not happy to do that. So that's a significant piece of work we're involved in. The other couple of things I've picked up are around our occupational therapy services. Couple of things about that is one of the things that we've introduced in terms of the occupational therapy services is a waiting well framework, which basically looks at if people have been waiting for a while on our waiting list, what we do to make sure those people remain safe, how we keep in touch with them, how we make sure that things are are becoming riskier. And that's an approach that we're taking in in various other areas across our services as well. And I think that's been a really welcome addition to the work we do. But you'll also see that we've had a really good decrease in in people waiting for OT services. So in a couple of years, the waiting has gone down from, a waiting list gone down from around 2,900 people to 949 that was reported in August. Now, that's despite the fact we've had 120%. You have to say it twice, because that's a big number, isn't it? 120% increase in demand into those services. So the fact that they've managed to deal with the demand and reduce the waiting list is a is a positive. But that's work that we're not giving up on. And we've we've recently opened an OT clinic at our offices at the Manor. So we've got some people who can go in there and get a service, which obviously we can get through more people there than if people are going out to visit people at home. But that's really very clearly triaged and screened. The other thing I just wanted to bring your attention to is, you know, in this report, I talk about assessments and reviews. And over the past couple of months, there's been a slight reduction in our performance around those. I don't think it's anything to be alarmed. I don't think it's anything to be alarmed about and there's probably some reasons for it. So particularly in terms of the reviews. I think the reduction in performance, some of it definitely is around what we've had to do because we've done the big home care transformation that people will know about. And the home care transformation created issues where we had to deal with a lot of people who were moving across from one provider to the other. So some of the resource we'd normally use for reviews has been redirected into making sure that that move from one provider to another. Happens in a positive way. I mean, I think finally to sum up. One of the appendix in here is talking about our performance on those, you know, those things that I've mentioned and some other things. We're using information that we will provide to CQC when they let us know that they're coming. So when CQC let us know they're coming, we've got X number of days to provide what they call the local authority information return. And what I've done in this report for, on this occasion, because we didn't have it before, is use that information to conclude in here. So it gives us a really clear way to track what our performance is month by month. I think, one of the things I often say about CQC assurance is we're not doing what we're doing because CQC are coming to check on us. We're doing what we're doing because the things they're judging us on are the right things to be judged on and we want our performance to be positive. And that's the reason I want the local authority information return to be something that all our staff are familiar with, that we share with people that they see. So what you'll see if you pick one of those things, so reviews would be a good one. We'll have on, it's all on a page that will give you the performance. It'll give you, you know, what we think is going on for us at the moment, if it's not, if the performance is going down. What steps we're taking and the reasons that we're taking those steps. So I think it is a really clear way of demonstrating. But what our performance is, but because we're regularly updating this on a monthly basis, it's really clear. So if we start thinking actually there's a downward trajectory there, we need to start giving this a bit more attention. It's really easy for us to see that in a useful way, I think. So I think that's all from me.
Are there any questions? Counselor Dwyer and then Counselor Nicholson.
Yeah, mine are really basic because a lot of this is new to me. But firstly, just the occupation of therapy and waiting times coming down as well from eighteen months to the longest being four months. This, I know from work, this is a really big improvement and really like impacts people's lives positively, so that's really good. I don't know what a social work review that is and what it's, that percentage is a measure of. So are you able to explain?
Yes, I'll explain that. So we should, we should review everyone that we have, we are providing care for yearly. There should be an annual review for everyone and we've set targets about where we should be with those reviews. We've set ourselves quite a challenging target, I think. But that's just demonstrating how many of those reviews we're getting through in a year.
Counselor Nicholson.
Thanks Chair. Thanks Janet for a great report. I wanted to focus in on the unpaid carers section. And I mean, I think it's really great how much work we're still pushing in here. And I remember back to a member's workshop session that we had quite some time ago now, maybe eighteen months ago. Where some of us put forward ideas for further development within adult social care. And Councillors Arjese Owen Thornton were definitely there. Some of the members might have been there and remember the event. And we all focused in on unpaid carers and wanting to really not go beyond just recognising how indispensable unpaid carers are in the whole care system. But actually trying to do more and support more and make sure that everyone's taken care of and that we don't have unpaid carers falling into ill health as well. So brilliant, absolutely brilliant to see this in here. And I think in terms of what more we can do. What I'm really curious about is when it comes to CQC, are they interested in this? So we've made it our business very, you know, really front and centre and it's always coming through in the reports, which is brilliant. But are CQC going to take any notice of what we're doing in this area? Is it actually a mandatory area of reporting?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's part of our care act requirements that we provide this service for unpaid carers. People do it differently. So we outsource our carers' assessments to the Carers Centre in Sheffield and we work very closely with them. One of the things we're having to do at the moment is in order for, if I go back to the layer pack. We're having to work to get them to be able to provide us the right numbers for that. So and our reading of where other people have had gone through the assurance process. It's a very, very big focus of where people are looking at. And I think it continues to be a real focus for us. I think one of the things that we're going to have to look at quite closely is we've been a victim of ours and the Carers Centre's success. So we are now having more people referred to the Carers Centre. I think we've got an operational group now that work together to make sure. Because I think probably some of our unpaid carers' work was focused on particular areas of adult care. We've now got members from across the board in adult care contributing to that. So our numbers that we are sending to the Carers Centre have increased quite dramatically. There's then clearly an impact of, a big impact on the Carers Centre about where the funding comes from for them to do the work they need to do. One of the places where we're looking at the moment is to our health colleagues. To see if we can get some funding from our health colleagues to put into the Carers Centre. So that's our most recent piece of work that we're doing. But yeah, it will get a big focus by CQC.
Thank you. And finally, Counselor Eris.
Thank you, Janet, for a comprehensive report. I wanted to ask some questions about the, well, a question basically. About the information advice bit, it's on page one six one, one six two on here. It's been a criticism, the council website has been heavily criticised from the public at large on how difficult it is to navigate at times. And I have to say at some terms, I have difficulty myself and I consider myself quite IT literate. How do you think that the, for example, the self-assessment? And the proposals in that section there? How do you think that that might? How that aspect of the website can be improved? And is there something that might be said about the overall website itself? I'm just wondering what conversations you've had with the IT people, basically.
I mean, basically that's part of the bigger programme of the customer experience. So the thing I mentioned about trying to stop us getting so much through our front door. So there's a big piece of digital work that's across council. And I think that's where we'll get the benefits from that. But certainly what we're looking at is the possibility of people being able to input their own information. There are liquid logic, which is the case management system we use. There are ways of people doing that themselves. We'd want things like financial assessments, because for some people, because you have to pay for social care. Don't think the budget will have changed that this afternoon. But for some people, if they realise that actually I'm going to have to pay for this myself anyway because of my income. I'll just go off and sort myself out. So I think that could be a really, really massive impact for people. And things like, you know, pieces of equipment, you know, just knowing that actually in this. I can think of my own experience when my dad became unwell, he had Parkinson's disease. If we'd have known in an easy way that there were things that we could have done. That we just found out and went off and sorted for ourselves. I think, you know, it's the balance for me between managing to divert the people who want to do it that way. So you've then got more time to deal with the people who need the more face-to-face and conversations.
Thank you. Thanks Janet for the report. So I am going to ask colleagues to look at the recommendations on page one hundred and fifty six. So there are two. Number one is to endorse the update of the Working With People Delivery Plan. And number two is to request the strategic director of adult health, care and wellbeing. Continues to provide the committee with updates and progress made against the delivery plan on a six monthly basis. Thank you. Members happy yet? Brilliant. Thank you so much Janet. And we are moving on to item eleven, which is on page one hundred and seventy nine of the agenda pack. And this is the Adult Workforce Strategy Delivery Update. I think John and a few partners at Hope are here to present. Thank you.
Hi, we'll just introduce ourselves. So John Chamberlain, a Workforce Development Manager in Sheffield City Council.
I'm Nicola Richards. I'm a care dyer in Sheffield. I'm also Board Director of National Care Association and founder of Support Social Care Heroes, which is what I need to talk to you about today.
Good afternoon. My name is Jane Fit MacIntyre and I'm the Practice Development Manager in Adult Social Care.
Okay, just kick us off. Kick us off. So yeah, thanks for having us today. So we're just here today to discuss the updates to the workforce development strategy, the care sector workforce development strategy, which was initially approved back in March twenty twenty three. The strategy initially set out how the council was seeking to build a workforce that was feeling valued and respected. In comparison to the kind of wider sectors in Sheffield, to develop capacity and sustainability for the care sector workforce in Sheffield. And also to support the training and skills development in that sector to be able to develop quality outcomes and delivery of services for the people of Sheffield as well. As I say, those were some of the key outcomes as part of the strategy back in March twenty twenty three. The strategy itself aligns really well, I feel, with a lot of the Sheffield City Council goals. So in particular, the Sheffield City Council goal around providing high quality care and support at the right time and place. So that people can be independent for longer and stay safe. As well, some of our wider council ambitions as well, particularly around the development of local economy and supporting local businesses. As well as developing our education, training, skills off for people in this sector. So I think really is a good example of kind of cross-sector work across the city. We also, we know that, you know, a large percentage of the population in Sheffield are likely to have to experience care at some point in their lives. So it's really vitally important that we've got a care sector which is full of passionate and really well-skilled people that are, you know, in this sector that's thriving as well. So in terms of the paper today, so this is the second time we've brought an update to committee. On the workforce development strategy since it was launched back in March twenty twenty three. Just to note, in terms of the strategy, that we've amended some of the priorities in the delivery plan as part of this update. And that was done for a number of reasons, but largely there's been some updates nationally from Skills of Care in there. Adult Social Care Workforce Strategy as well. So we made some slight amendments to the priorities in that, which we feel align better with that as well as some of the service delivery as well. And that the delivery plan is attached as part of Appendix One as well, which you can see. But the key priorities that we've updated are the number one, which was the development of the Care Academy. So we've separated that into its own key priority. And then the other priorities are around valuing, empowering and retaining the care workforce. Creating a more representative adult care workforce, developing the adult care workforce to attract and recruit the adult care workforce. And to improve conditions in the adult care workforce as well. And as I say, the delivery plan contains a lot of the information and the activity that myself and colleagues in the council are undertaking to try and support the workforce in Sheffield in this space as well. There's obviously lots and lots of activity in the delivery plan in Appendix One, but we just wanted to, just because of time, we wanted to run through some of the key highlights as part of this. And that's reflected in the recommendations as part of this. So the first one for us to touch upon really was the development of the Sheffield Health and Care Academy. Which was one of the key commitments as part of the workforce development strategy back in March. And really pleased to say that we launched it last Thursday on the twenty fourth of October. It was a really fantastic launch event that was downstairs and some members were in attendance as part of that. Just to say as well, key partners from across Sheffield attended and a lot of the people that were instrumental in the co-design process as well, were a part of that as well. Kate Josephs opened the event as well, just to really showcase the importance of the care sector workforce. And I think in particular, a big thanks to the Chair, Counselor Gendo for stepping in at the last minute to open a part of that as well. So I think it was a very, a really, really good event actually. And yeah, I think hopefully generates some good excitement about the work we're doing around the Care Academy. So the Care Academy itself, we've named the Sheffield Care Academy for Recruitment, Education and Support, which is Sheffield Cares, which we thought was quite clever. So that's Sheffield Cares is our Care Academy. The, there is more details about the Care Academy and some of the aims and ambitions and some of the work we're doing to develop that further as part of Appendix Three. But largely speaking, the aims of the Care Academy is to retain, recruit and grow our care sector workforce in Sheffield. And to continue to develop outstanding person-centered care for the citizens of Sheffield. The main ambitions and main focus around that is around promoting careers in care, improving the recruitment process for applicants and providers. To support staff to continue working in care, to improve the staff training offer, promote the use of technology, digital ways of working and support innovation and best practice. And then improving our data collection and the way in which we use data to drive activities around workforce. Just to say, due to time scales, we're taking a phased approach to the way that we've developed the academy. So initially, we've launched the academy, which is essentially a website, which is bringing together advice and guidance for people who might be interested in working for care. Or those that, sorry, those that are already working in care or those that are seeking to start their careers in care. And that was launched as part of the event last Thursday. We'll continue to develop the offer around the Care Academy based around priorities that we've just mentioned. The other element that we've launched as part of this paper was we've commissioned an organisation called Care Professional Academy. Initially for two years, which we went through in quite a lot of detail as part of the launch event. Which will be to deliver a training portal and a benefits and reward system for the Care Academy. That will encourage staff to upload training certificates and qualifications. And they'll be able to share the training passport with inspectors and employers and will reward them for undertaking training. They'll also reward staff for undertaking more training, training with better benefits. So that we're really encouraging the professionalisation of the care sector. There's also a provider portal as well, which we've got access as well. So that allows providers to track and monitor the staff training development. And they'll be able to use the passports for monitoring and inspections. And of course, as I've said, incentivise staff to complete training development with rewards. As part of the portal, the benefits, so providers can advertise the benefits that we've included as part of this, as part of their job adverts. So really encouraging people to work, to start working in care. There'll be benefits available for staff essentially from day one as soon as they've undertaken six hours of training activities. So there's a lot of, a lot of the rewards that we've included are a part of that. We'll encourage employees to undertake more training and promote that culture of professional development. And also support portability of care professionals around the city as well. So that's one of the benefits of the commission that we've undertaken. Just to note that unfortunately, the commissioning of the Care Professional Academy was finalized after this report was finished. So there's more detail that we can provide in a further update, but that's why there's some slight limitation in terms of the report that's there. Just in terms of the, as I've mentioned, in terms of developing the academy offer. We're really seeing this as a way to bring together the workforce development offer for the workforce in Sheffield. So really using that as a place to bring all people together. And also one of the key next stages we'll be looking at is to use the academy to bring towards, bring together our care workforce. So they've got a place to come together and share best practice and support each other. We'll be looking, initially looking at an online offer so that care staff can come together to support each other. And then we'll be looking at developing in-person support offers as this develops. As I've mentioned, there's more information included as part of Appendix Three in terms of the current offer and what the ongoing offer will be as part of this. But we're hopeful that the activities in relation to the Care Academy will help us to address some of the longstanding issues that we're aware of in terms of the adults' care workforce. Including kind of recruitment, vacancies and the conditions for staff as well. So that was the. So that was the, that's the summary of the Care Academy. Just in terms of some of the other key activities we wanted to raise as part of this as well was the Care Excellence Awards, which is one of the other recommendations as part of the, as part of the paper. So again, as part of our workforce development strategy, we talked about our ambitions to value and reward the care sector workforce. As part of this, in 2025, we'll be launching our first ever Sheffield Cares Excellence Awards, which will be an opportunity for us to recognise and celebrate the diverse and compassionate workforce that work in care across the Sheffield region. This will follow on directly from the Sheffield Dignity Awards, which last place in 2022. But this will be our largest award ceremony that we've run as part of this. And we'll, as I say, we'll celebrate the diverse range of people that offer support as part of adult social care in Sheffield. There are over 50 award categories that we're including as part of the award ceremony that will range from categories including young carers to social care nursing and all of the kind of, all of our careers within that. So we are trying to showcase a wide range of career pathways and opportunities that are available within the care sector in Sheffield. Also looking to celebrate the contribution from all areas of care, including unpaid carers as well. So that's one of the key areas that we're looking to celebrate. The award ceremony itself will be taking place on the 13th of September at Sheffield City Hall. We've included as part of the pack, there's nominations are open at the moment for carers at the moment, so we've included some details about that at the moment. And we really just feel that actually this is a really good way for us to support the ambitions of the strategy to value and empower the care workforce and be able to celebrate the care workforce that we have in the city. So that's that. Just very lastly, sorry, we're skipping about the agenda slightly in terms of the paper, just because this is one of the areas that I myself have been involved in beforehand, on to Nicola and Jane, was just to talk a little bit about some of the workforce forums that we've mentioned as part of the paper. So these were development of workforce forums that were the idea to involve and engage partners from across health and social care to continue to develop our approach to workforce development, wellbeing and shared workforce standards. And just that throughout 2024 and 25, we're going to be running a number of workforce forums that will champion best practice and information sharing and learning. The first forum that we'll be running will actually be launching next month on the 20th of November, and that's going to be a forum specifically focusing on best practice in regards to leadership and management of overseas care workers, which is very relevant at the moment, considering, you know, we've had a lot of press around this at the moment. Future forums will be focusing on staff wellbeing and then equality, diversity, inclusion as well is the programme that we're looking at in terms of that. And just lastly from myself, this unfortunately couldn't be included in the paper because of timescales, but we've recently been celebrated as part of the South Yorkshire Health Innovation Awards as well, due to our workforce development work that we're undertaking at the moment and some of the integrated work that we're doing with the South Yorkshire ICB. And that we showcased, the innovation showcased on the 18th of November as well, so I tried to wipe that in whilst we were there as we were celebrating workforce as well. So that's it from myself at this point. Next, I'm going to hand over to Nicola Richards, who's going to talk about some of the work that we're doing around wellbeing support for the people of Sheffield at the moment, and in particular, supporting Social Care Heroes. So it's Nicola.
Hi. So, yeah, I've worked in social care for over 25 years, so I've got two care homes in the city, in Walkley and Fervale. I think, as we all know, we had huge challenges in the pandemic and particularly social care got hit quite badly. So I think for all the negatives that happened in the pandemic, some absolutely amazing work around the country, locally, amongst care providers, supporting each other, and we really, really come together and buddied each other along in what was a really difficult time. And one of the things that I particularly thought about in the pandemic was the wellbeing of the workforce, because what we're not very good at is shouting about what we do really well in social care. We're quite humble about it. And what I saw in the pandemic with my team in the homes was just amazing, absolutely amazing what they did, they went above and beyond. And a lot of the emphasis was on, around supporting the NHS workforce, which I think is fabulous, but we felt a bit overlooked in social care. So working with the team in the pandemic brought about this lightbulb moment of it's time to care for our carers. And it's, it sounds really cliche, but it absolutely was because care staff were telling me, you know, I've done this, I've been the hairdresser, I've been the family friend, I've been everything to the sort of residents within the homes and particularly my homes. And what they were also telling me is, I'm not taking time out for myself, I'm not looking after myself, I don't feel great. So this is where it came from. And I talk about a lady who I work with called Laura, and she said, you know, I just feel really rubbish, my diet's not healthy. And we had a long chat downstairs in one of my homes, and I thought, right, this is it, I've got to do something for our workforce, I've got to get them that recognition that they deserve and also take time out for themselves. So I set up an off-for-profit organisation called Support Social Care Heroes to look at delivering health and wellbeing projects within my services and a pilot group across Sheffield, which absolutely, the feedback initially from what we were doing around menopause support, healthy wellbeing, fitness, all the sort of things in a really bespoke way for our care workers, understanding the challenges, the work, long hours, it's generally a lower paid workforce. So I got some funding from the ICB initially, and we've built four wellbeing pods around the city that care workers can use to have a wellbeing session, and that could be anything from emotional support, fitness support, self-care basically. And it is, we're doing that whilst they're at work, in the workplace, and we've worked with a number of homes across Sheffield. We've subsequently got some more funding through John and Catherine's team for the next 12 months, is looking at engaging more in the community as well for unpaid carers and PAs, because we realise that there's a gap in that area as well. So that's something that we're really keen to focus on over the next 12 months. So we've got Vicky and Seb, who are health and wellbeing led, and they're doing two sessions a week at the moment, and giving back to the care workers that absolutely deserve it. We also do a hero award of the month, so that's a national, anybody can basically nominate every, anyone from across the country. The feedback from that, just people being recognised and they get, you know, a £50 voucher, they get a hero's hoodie and just basically a certificate. The amazing feedback for such a small reward has been fantastic. All the reason why I set this up, and this is why I wanted to continue. I think just given that we've got the awards next year is amazing, because I think we are overlooked generally, so I think given that we've got the Care Academy, which we're linking in with, we've had incredible support from the council. For me, it just feels like we should be really proud of what we're doing in Sheffield from a health and wellbeing offer, and that's something that we're keen to continue. So, yeah, it's amazing and getting the feedback from the staff just saying, we get one testimonial that just makes me think, God, this is just amazing, we can't afford to lose these people, they're absolutely going above and beyond. So for me, I'm really proud that we in Sheffield have got social care heroes, we've got the Care Academy, and it's really about giving back to those people who absolutely deserve it.
We just want to finish by focusing on the development of our internal social care workforce. We've been working hard to deliver on the Local Government Association workforce standards, and this works reflected in the Professional Development Plan. The development and retention of our staff is a key objective, and we've demonstrated this via our Grow Your Own model. As a result, we've seen increased numbers of staff develop their social care career in all areas, including 26 newly qualified social workers undertaking their assessed year in employment, which is the highest number we've ever had, and they will become the experienced social workers of the future. We're also particularly pleased to have increased our social work apprenticeship offer from five social work trainees to nine, who started this September with one deferred until next year. And bucking the national trend, we currently have a full quota of occupational therapists, including successful appointments to the principal OT post and service manager post. We're also pleased to report that the outcomes from the LGA workforce survey for social care staff and occupational therapists were positive overall. Having reviewed the LGA results, we've worked with team managers to implement a reflective approach to supervision via a new training programme. And the recent supervision survey revealed there'd been an improved performance in staff having regular supervision and using a reflective approach, which is fundamental in promoting staff wellbeing. The principal OT has also adopted a collaborative approach with OT staff to engage them in the improvement programme for OT services, and this is addressing the area identified in the OT LGA survey relating to staff being able to influence change. Finally, we've worked with staff to deliver on the LGA standard four to promote staff wellbeing and create a positive learning culture. We've improved our in-person training offer and introduced research in practice, a learning platform, to assist staff in meeting their continuing professional development. We've promoted in-person opportunities for staff to discuss practice issues within their teams, using research in practice as a resource. And we're therefore particularly pleased that staff wellbeing in social care was above the national average at 78% and 72% amongst OTs. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have councillor Aries who wants to ask a question.
Yeah, quick, quick comment. I really do welcome this, and I think myself back to the pandemic, and I think that all care workers that were working through that period deserve an award. Anyway, that aside, that would be very brief. In terms of the, and obviously I welcome, it's a milestone, isn't it, the Care Academy? So when the roadshows start to take place, could I, a request really that you involve, inform local councils, but also involve the local area committees as well? Because I think that may be a vehicle to, you know, to sort of get awareness that the Sheffield Cares now exists at a local level. And I do think, you know, it's been an issue of mine, right, since the pandemic, that recruitment and retention, particularly in the social care sector, has become a major challenge with competition from cheaper, you know, the Amazon and places like that, you know what I mean? So, yeah, if you could involve the local area committees, I think that's the question.
Yeah, just to respond, yeah, thank you for your comments, councillor Aries. Yeah, I think that's a really, really fair idea. We're just undertaking planning at the moment for how we'll continue the communication approach to expand that at the moment. And we'll be just doing planning around how we can go out to communities and engage more with staff and kind of local areas. So I think, as you say, including local councils and the local area committees is a fantastic idea, so we'll definitely include that.
Before I bring councillor McLean in, I have a note on my thing around the local area committee, and I was wondering whether, you know, the awards, because the nomination closed on Sunday. If you have not already done it, could you email the managers of each lack and ask them to disseminate the nomination link onto all the community organisations that are linked to each lack? Because they will know local people that could be nominated. And also, I don't know whether all councillors have already been emailed, you may already have done it, but it might be useful to send councillors' nomination links so that they can then disseminate that information as well. You don't need to answer that, I'm just, you've reminded me, thank you councillor. Councillor McLean?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that report today. Especially thank you to Nicola for coming. It's really good to hear about what you've set up, and especially as a Walkley councillor, it's great to hear there's a care home in our ward that cares about its workers. So deep, so that's excellent. And so I just quickly mention paragraph 2.8 of the report, which is about the Unison and GMB ethical care charters that the council signed up to, which is, you know, it's great because they, these charters make sure that there's sustainable pay conditions and training levels for our workers, but that's good because it means that, you know, people who are receiving care will get better care. And just to say, we're really welcome the update, it sort of shows that we are working towards meeting all aspects of those standards and that we're hoping to have an ambition of meeting them all by next December. Just to say, that's just really exciting, really good to hear, and we look forward to hearing more over the next 12 months, so thank you for that. And then I think with the Sheffield Care stuff as well, you're really welcome that, it's just recognising our care workforce, our care professionals, and it's just really exciting time, really good. As a quick question about that, I know that in the implementation plan, there's a discussion to be had over what will happen eventually, whether the Sheffield Cares will remain in-house or will be sort of become independent. And I just wondered across the country, if other places are a bit further ahead of us, and what other people are doing to deal with that, and what our initial thoughts are really? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and there's a big variation is what I would say in terms of across the country. So we've, I mean, as part of the work we did to do the design of the Care Academy, we did a lot of review of the different models and different offer that are available as part of their care academies. And there was a big, you know, a big variation in that. Leeds, in particular, that's an independent organisation, that's a partnership between the health organisations, the care sector, and then the council as well. So what I would say is obviously we've tried to use a co-design process as part of the design of this where we can, so I'd be really keen to continue that. And I think it's actually, you know, it needs to be an open discussion between the, you know, the key partners as part of that, as we, as we, as we continue to develop. I think personally, I think there's pros and cons as to whether or not we do, you know, in terms of funding and other avenues that we could potentially explore if it was an independent body. But I think from my perspective, I think it's a conversation that we need to do properly and, you know, involve people in as part of that as well. So, but yeah, we'll obviously feedback to the committee at the next update in terms of how we're getting on with that and how that direction's going.
Thank you. Can I take councillor Dwyer and councillor Milson's comments and questions together? And then I'll bring these to a close, because we've gone 20 minutes over.
Yeah, it was, firstly, thank you for telling us about the Support Social Care Heroes. And I was thinking about how it's a majority female workforce in the sector, and the earlier report on the dementia strategy opened my eyes to that women are more at risk of it. And I was just wondering whether there's going to be like, whether that wellbeing support and support you're putting in place is more directed at the actual workforce you have in women. And then my question was on the Care Academy implementation plan, it talks about international recruitment. And we know that part of this is an area where sponsorship visas can become a real way of holding people into jobs because they can't find another sponsorship visa at work. We use open source data, either from the union of journalists, to find people new jobs. And I was just wondering, with part of the implementation plan that you're looking at, because I looked at the website last night, it has job vacancies and whether you could advertise places that have sponsorship visas, who can sponsor new jobs to help reduce the risk of exploitation in those providers?
Yeah, so just specifically on the question around international recruitment, we're actually working with Yorkshire Number Eight, that's specifically on a project to, in particular where sponsors have, sorry, where care workers are affected by licence revocation, so where the providers have the licence revoked. And there's a project happening at a regional level that we're involved in, and it's happening in Sheffield at the minute, where we're trying to support those workers back into employment in the care sector and to, yeah, to try and find the alternative employment. As part of that process as well, we'll be trying to offer advice and guidance and support around care providers, around best practice in terms of what we would expect in terms of ethical international recruitment and the things that we would expect in that, in that space. And obviously, as part of one of the forums that we mentioned, which is taking place on 20th of November as well, is going to be all about highlighting best practice in regards to the management and leadership of overseas workers as well. So I think there's a lot of activity happening in that space at the moment, because there is obviously a lot of press, and we're aware it's a, it's a growing issue as well. So we are trying to do lots of activity and support in that space as well. So hopefully that answers the question.
Councillor Mills?
Yeah, just in response to what we're delivering in the wellbeing sessions, we are doing some work around menopause and quite holistic approaches to menopause, given we've got a higher number of females in the workplace. But what we do is really bespoke to what the care workers But what we do is really bespoke to what the care workers want, so we listen to what the care workers are saying that they need. One of the things, one of the projects that we ran recently was a Know Your Numbers project based on care workers saying that they couldn't get time off to go and visit the GP, basic blood pressure. So we really, it's what we offer are bespoke to the workforce and whether there's gaps, we will look at developing those sessions to meet the needs of the people that we're caring for. Men's health has been quite a big, big ask as well for males working alongside predominantly females in the workplace. And even down to some of the menopause work that we've been doing, the men have been really engaged in that, that's been fantastic. So there's been some real success stories and I'm more than happy to share testimonials afterwards by email. But yeah, we're constantly looking at, I'd really say the word bespoke to the care workforce that we're working with.
Councillor Milson and councillor Grokert, I don't want to rush people, but we've been on this now half an hour longer than we had planned.
Thank you, Chair. So I've got questions just about the, how we reach out into less engaged communities with the careers offer. So without using too many words on this, obviously we have the City Hall, a big career event, and there's some mention of roadshow kind of events through the Care Academy rollout programme. I'm just wondering what that looks like in terms of getting out and is there some connection with the North East Sheffield model neighbourhood, for example, reaching into educational settings and taking our offer out there into the less engaged communities? The social care heroes, I could ask loads about it today, but actually I wonder, would we maybe look at a site, a site visit? I'd love to see one of these pods, it sounds absolutely fascinating. So to save time today, could we perhaps, Chair, look at arranging some kind of visit for those of us who are interested in finding out more, it sounds brilliant? And on the Care Academy, on the Care Professionals Academy digital platform, two questions on that. Are we looking at developing a local offer for the reward scheme? Because at the moment, it's a huge suite of rewards, but they are all big national companies and high street brands. And it'd be really great to tie in with our local economic strategy with the council too, in terms of community wealth building, to develop a local offer and to put that front and centre. And just on the Care Professionals Academy, you said it's a two-year contract with that. Do we own the platform? If we don't renew that contract in two years' time, does that platform disappear and we have to get something else? Or do we own that localised platform?
Sorry, before you answer, could I take Miss Councillor Grokert?
Thank you. And it's just some information for Nicola, actually. The Lord Mayor has been championing a lot of work around the menopause. So if you haven't already, it may just be worth connecting in with her and doing some work there because that would be fantastic. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
I'll just take the two questions. And so, yeah, just in terms of the councillor Milton, in terms of the engagement with communities. So, yeah, as part of the roadshows that we talked about earlier, in terms of the going out to communities, that we'll certainly be looking at trying to engage with, you know, the diverse communities as part of Sheffield. I think as well, last month, we brought the Equality, Diversity, Inclusion, Social Justice Delivery Plan as well. And I think there's clear links between that plan and this in terms of actually how can we create and sustain a representative workforce in Sheffield as well? And as part of that work as well, we've talked about, you know, making sure that we're engaging with communities so that we've got, you know, really strong and representative social care offer as well, including the workforce as well. So I think between those, that hopefully answers that question. And just in terms of the portal through the Care Professional Academy, we certainly will, obviously it's brand new, we've only just signed the contract on that in terms of the benefits offered. So I think it's really, really advantageous, advantageous actually, that we've already got access to such a, you know, a strong but with suite of benefits that we can access. But absolutely, we'll, we'll do some work with our colleagues in business Sheffield and the, you know, in the commercial services to look at the ways in which we can really develop our local offer. Because it'd be great if we could have something like the Sheffield Theatres or, you know, access to football tickets, that kind of stuff as part of our care workers. And in terms of the Commercial Services contract, that is a two-year contract, so we don't own the portal, that's owned by Care Professional Academy. So we would have to review the offer after two years if that was decided not to continue. So it is a limited offer, so we don't own that, I'm afraid.
Thank you. So I will now look at the recommendations, there are six on page one hundred and eighty. So we are asked to note the progress made with implementing the Sheffield Care Sector Workforce Development Strategy Delivery Plan twenty-three, twenty-six. Note the progress made with development and implementation of the Health and Care Academy in Sheffield, hereby named Sheffield Cares. Note the progress to develop a Sheffield Adult Workforce Celebration and Recognition Event in February twenty-five. Note progress in implementing the professional development plan and working, working to achieve the LGA employer standards for professional therapists and social workers, Unison Ethical Care Charters and GMB Care Charter, sorry, Unison Ethical Care Charter. Note the development of care sector workforce forums to involve and engage social care providers, voluntary sector and academia in further developing our approach to workforce development, wellbeing and including agreement of shared workforce standards. And finally, requested the strategic director of adult care and wellbeing continues to provide the committee with updates on progress against the strategy on a six monthly basis, including updates made based on ongoing learning. Are members happy with those? Thank you and thank you very much. And thanks Nicola for coming along. And we'll arrange a visit, yeah? Brilliant. We're moving now on to item twelve, which is the DAS report. Catherine, I assume you are? I don't, I don't think it matters because it's, yeah, you can say that, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm presenting the DAS report on behalf of Alexis today, so I'm going to try my hardest to do it justice. Committee are asked to note progress in delivery on our adult social care strategy, particularly the work with our Adults Partnership Board and our Performance Dashboard. At paragraph two point five point six, the written report asks committee to approve an approach to our strategy refresh and apologies for that. What we actually wanted our committee to do was note the approach that we're going to take to our strategy refresh. Section two point one provides some of the key activity that we've done in the last quarter to six months and most of those have been covered or will be covered in reports today, particularly noting personalisation week next month, some work on our sensory and hearing approach and offer and the homewards programme and exempt accommodation review. Section two point two sets out our performance management framework with updated milestones in appendix one for approval, with section two point three giving our key highlights and risks. The highlights of performance are largely around safeguarding this quarter and Janet's covered some of the working with people risks and the actions that we're taking to improve performance there. Section two point four briefly gives an update on some of our work and our partnership approach and our work with our Adults Partnership Board. Yeah, and then section two point five is our approach to refreshing our strategy aligned with other key documents. Finishing with a bit of an update on our CQC prep. There we go, I've won some time back there, I think.
Brilliant. Are there any questions on that update from DAS? And thank you to councillor McLean, they noticed the error on page one hundred and forty-one in two point five six, which is, should be, committee are asked to note and therefore the recommendation has also changed, number three has also changed to note. So the recommendations are on page two hundred and thirty-four. So they are as follow. Note the progress in delivering upon the adult care strategy, living the life you want to live. Note the progress with Adults Partnership Board and collaboration with Centre for Care Research Department at the University of Sheffield and representatives from the care sector. And number three should say, note the performance milestone set in appendix one and note the performance update and action to deliver our respective standards. Fiona, can you make sure that we've changed that number three to note as we discussed in the pre-meeting? Are people happy with the recommendations? Thank you very much and thanks Catherine for presenting. And we are moving on to item thirteen, which is the Care Home Transformation and the S2A Update Report.
Hi there, yeah, so introduce myself first of all, so it's Mubarak Darbar, working in the commissioning team as program lead.
I'm still Jo Pass, Assistant Director for Living and Aging Well Long-Term Services.
Fabulous. So this report is on the Care Homes Transformation, which includes complex care respite provision and somewhere else to assess. So the report seeks approval for a commissioning strategy for enhanced care in residential settings. This will include provision of planned and emergency respite, complex care and somewhere else to assess discharge provision. This work has been done in collaboration both with the operational team and the commissioning team.
So from an operational perspective, I would just give you a little bit of feedback. So following on from the previous item, I think what we are, what we're experiencing in residential and nursing care has changed significantly since the pandemic. We really need to be thinking about what the citizens of Sheffield need for the next seven to ten years. We're also, when we're looking at people coming out of hospital and generally, we're looking to keep as many people at home as long as possible. So they're the drivers. Now, in relation to complex need, I think we've seen, well, we have seen increasing amount of acuity, which has meant that we have needed complex need placements in the city. And although it's grown from seventy-seven people in two thousand and eighteen to a hundred and twenty-four in September twenty-four, the cost of that to us is ten million pounds. So this is something that we really need to kind of get that commissioning approach right so that we have a clearer offer, an equitable offer in relation to complex needs and we're sure that it develops, it delivers best value for money. And that it responds to what we know is often a bell curve of changing needs. So somebody may have enhanced needs for a period of time, but it isn't going to necessarily be for always and so to respond to that. We know operationally that respite is a significant issue for us in the city at the present time. Also, I think that we have people at home with greater complexity of need and therefore when we have need respite, whether that be on a planned or emergency basis, we need that full spectrum so that we can meet respite needs in both a residential nursing and potentially some enhanced placements as well. And that is so crucial to supporting our informal carers that get, providing them with a much needed break. And that is a real challenge for us to secure those placements at the present time in the market. So that's a further area that this paper covers. Finally, S2A, somewhere else to assess, is where the route that people upon discharge from hospital, where we cannot get them home at that point in time, that suggests to a residential nursing setting, whether we assess their ongoing support needs and how we can best meet them. National guidance said that about one per cent of discharges should be via the S2A pathway. In Sheffield, we're currently at two per cent. We are doing wide system partnership work to bring that into the one per cent, getting as many people home as we possibly can. Our S2A pathway at the present time is for acute physical health patient discharges. We need an S2A pathway that also incorporates those that are discharged from mental health. And back to that acuity of need, we need those that can offer up that enhanced level of care. Because it's where it is, wherever possible, we're getting people home with wraparound support. We're working to get as many people home and ensure they have the wraparound support to stay at home in a sustainable way.
Are there any questions? Councillor Dwyer?
Sorry, mine's a really simple question because I wasn't on the committee at the time and it was, one point four, talking about standard care home contracts, sufficiency. And it's talking about twenty-seven providers, forty-eight care homes. So how does this contract work? And does it cover all the care homes we commissioned to? So my question is very much, how does that model work? Yeah.
So no, this is, I think the introduction of our standard contract has been the first step that we've delivered on our transformational journey. Because prior to that, we didn't have contractual arrangements with the homes. So it doesn't, we've been working with the market to get them signed up and we continue to work with the market to get them signed up. The contract from a social work perspective provides clarity regarding what our expectations are of what will be offered in a standard level of residential and nursing placement. But we're aware, you know, that's the first bit we've delivered. Now we need to move on to those complex level of needs that we see and the short term, whether that be respite or S2A.
Just a quick follow-up, just a quick follow-up. So is that on the standard care contract, is that the majority of places we would commission standard care to are signed up to that now, working on the same framework?
It's over the halfway line. It's a majority, yeah. I'm a kind of a ninety per cent sort of girl myself, so, you know, but it is over the halfway line.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the report. And I just want to repeat this, I see this in NHS meetings as well. I think the reason why we are so keen for people to go home is because people live better and longer if they're at home. It's not because we don't want them in other contexts, but all data and research indicates that's why it's the best place to go if possible. And I think it's important that people understand that because otherwise people might think that we want to save money. It's not about the money, it's the best outcomes for people always. Thank you. So there are six recommendations, no, sorry, I'm on the wrong place. We're on fourteen, aren't we? Oh, we are on thirteen. Sorry. Yes, thirteen. So there are six recommendations again. One of them is really long. So I'll read them out to you. So number one is note the progress in delivering the Care Homes Transformation Plan. Approve the commissioning strategy to develop and deliver enhanced care in residential settings to ensure sufficiency of provision for older adults aged sixty-five and over who have a complexity of care needs. This includes enhanced care, planned and emergency respite provision and somewhere else to assess beds. For twenty-four, twenty-five, the available budget for all the people's care home is fifty-two point six million. And the development of enhanced residential care and planned emergency respite will need to be delivered within the available resources. Number three, approve the associated high level delivery plan for the next two years, so from twenty twenty-four to twenty-six, including the intention to re-procue support and sustain the market. Number four, approve a further extension of current providers on somewhere else to assess contracts to the thirtieth of September twenty twenty-five. Note that charging for somewhere else to assess beds will begin from completion of the care and financial assessment in line with the change in policy. And finally, number six, request the strategic director of adult care and wellbeing to provide the committee with an update on progress against care homes and our transformation programme in six months' time. I like how Alexis' title changes sometimes in the thing, but are members happy with that? Thank you very much and thanks Mubarak and Jo for presenting. And we are on to item fourteen, which is the appointee strategy to a ponchif future delivery model. Mary, do you want to introduce yourself?
Good afternoon, I'm Mary Gardner. I'm Strategic Commissioning Manager and I focus on particular personalised support, direct payments and unpaid carers. Dewey's my P A and she's just assisting me this afternoon.
Do you want to present the report, just give us a few highlights? Maybe just explain for the layperson what a ponchip is? And it's very clear in the report, but just for people who have not read it out there.
Yeah, happy to talk through that. One of my first sections was going to be explaining what it is, because I think it can be quite complicated. And so thanks for your time, I'm here to talk about the corporate appointeeship and the strategy and the approach that we want to take forward in the future. And I'm asking committee to note that we had a review of how we run corporate appointeeships at the moment and looked about the mitigations for that review. And we're looking for approval of the proposal to use the council's in-house executive services to manage appointeeships as the first option, with external providers offering support as needed. And note that we will be back in six months to tell you how we're getting on with the development of that, and that'll be part of the safeguarding. So just to summarise what's in the paper, I highlight what the current approach is. And the current approach is that the council use both in-house executive services and also external providers to provide corporate appointeeships on behalf of people. And that I'd like you to look at recommendation for us to adopt option two, which is where executive services will primarily handle the corporate appointeeships, but use external services when necessary. And finally, the reason why we think that's the best benefit is that it ensures quality assurance, it provides us with best value, but most importantly, it prioritises people's individual best interests. So to start, the most important thing is to explain what a corporate appointeeship is. So a corporate appointeeship is somebody or an organisation that manages welfare benefits on behalf of people that haven't got the capacity to make those decisions about finances themselves, or are severely disabled and unable to. They're something that's appointed by the D W P. Generic term is appointeeships. Appointeeships can either be a family member, an individual, or a friend that can do that. If that's not available, then they'll look at a corporate appointeeship, which is an organisation like the local authority or a provider to provide that service for somebody. We also sometimes talk about deputyships. That's something slightly different. That's somebody who would manage the whole of the person's individual finances, financial affairs in their entirety. So that's including all of their income, pensions, and assets. And that's something that's appointed for somebody that can't have, can't, unable to make those decisions either. But they're provided by the, made decisions by the court of deputyship. So in terms of where we're at the moment, there is no legal duty for us to provide appointeeships, corporate appointeeships, no duty within the Care Act. However, a previously, previous policy decision did recognise that this was the most important thing to do because it helps to safeguard the most vulnerable people's money. And it's their personal money, so we need to take best regard for that. We do have a power to offer the service, and we also have a general duty under the Care Act to protect vulnerable people. Obviously, that's what we want to do. By us paying for that service means that it protects the people that have got most vulnerabilities about money, but also the, the people that are probably likely to have debt and likely to have the, the lower incomes that wouldn't be able to buy that privately if that was, if that was the alternate option. So we've got currently eight hundred and fifty people that are appointed through appointeeships. Seventy-six of those, seventy-six percent of those, sorry, are run by our in-house services, and the remaining twenty-four percent use four different providers external to the council. The review found that there was five key risks. That was around our contractual arrangements and the fact that we've got a lack of formal contracts with any of the external corporate appointeeships. There were some quality issues, the fact that we haven't got any contracts means there's no quality assurance or governance in place for that from our local authority perspective. There's an issue around fee rates and that we've got inconsistent fee requests for some of those external providers. Best value in terms of the range of costs that come from those, providing those external providers and ourselves. And again, about informed choice and there's variability in the arrangements around people having those decisions made for them and using best interests. We did an options appraisal, we looked at four different options. I'll run through them very quickly and focus more on the one that we're going with. So obviously, we had an option of doing nothing, obviously, for the research identified that wasn't the appropriate option for us. Our second option is for our in-house executive services to be the primary option with external procurement of providers as that's needed. And when I say that's needed, that's when it becomes down to the individual's choice, if they're able to make those decisions, or through best interest assessment, which is something that our social workers would support people to, to work that through. Feel that that's the best option, because it makes sure that we're, we're using our oversight and our monitoring. It enables us to think about best value, and it enables our corporate appointeeships to work partnership with external procurement to make sure that we can manage searches in demand and specific requests. And it also gives us flexibility around meeting those individual needs. Our third option, our third and fourth option, quite similar. Our third option was about using our executive services as a primary option and having a recognised provider list. That's a list of providers that have been through some preliminary checks with the council, that we would make sure that they monitor some quality and standards around that. But it didn't give us any, any jurisdiction really over the pricing or the fees paid by those providers. The fourth option, which would be our, our second choice, is around executive services, again, being that first primary option, but using a framework or a dynamic purchase in order to be able to make additional requirements and have a framework for providers to offer that support. The reason that we haven't gone for that choice is that we've considered best value, and we want to make sure that that's something we're bearing in mind. If we needed to go through a framework, that would have some commission implications with our, with recruitment of commission officers and resources to be able to manage that. So yes, in summary, we want to make sure that people get the right choices. So we think by having internal options, having been able to grow the capacity and quality of that service, but having providers externally for those people who need it, gives us the most assurance. It gives us better value for money because we'll be able to standardize costs and make sure that we're using the most efficient ways of, of using our budget. And it gives up people that flexibility where they can make decisions and where we do need to use mental capacity principles of best value, oh, sorry, best interest.
Thank you, are there any questions? Great. Thank you, so I'm going to read the recommendations. These are on page twenty-four of the pack. First one is to note the review of appointeeship and mitigations in response to the review. Number two is to approve the proposal for the council in-house provider executor services to provide corporate friendship where appropriate, whilst making external purchases available where a best interest assessment or other circumstance identifies this is required. And number three, note that a progress review update will be brought to committee within six months of this committee meeting as part of the safeguarding delivery plan update to the committee. Are people happy with those? Great, thank you so much, Mary and the team for this. And we move on to item fifteen, which is providing market sustainability and commissioning plan update, commissioning update. Thanks, Mubarak.
Shall I go first? Sorry, we're doing a bit of a double act from different ends of the room. Mubarak is the care suites lead and genius, so any questions about that, we'll go to him for sure. So the market, sort of market oversight report comes regularly. There's quite a lot of reading that's come with, that's come with this report for members, so apologies for that, but most of it is for noting. One of the key things we want to do is, is talk about the market position statement. We published a sort of overarching statement about our, our market and what we were wanting from providers in late twenty twenty-two, followed by a series of more specific market position statements through twenty-three and twenty-four. And what we'd like committee to note is our intention to refresh that for the new financial year, aligning it with the refresh of the adult social care strategy. So it's of consistent data, consistent approaches that go out. Section two, although the numbering continues with one point sixteen, one point seventeen, so sorry about that. But that gives some progress across our key commissioning strategies. It focuses on living and aging well as a report this quarter. And committee are asked to approve our commissioning intentions around that, particularly progressing a care suites model and approving a contract variation with Care Watch to deliver care and support in Brunswick Gardens extra care scheme. And then there's a very small update on some of our work around quality and ensuring a financially stable market. And we're happy to take questions.
Mubarak, are you adding anything to? Shall we take them together, all together? Is that okay? Were you going to add anything to that, Mubarak?
No, other than take any questions you have on care suites.
Are there any questions from colleagues? Okay, I will go with, Council McLean?
Thank you, and thanks for this report. It was a very full report, but it was good to have an update on it all, especially on the care and wellbeing service. And I just had a question about that. Obviously, we talked about a lot, committee, about the new service and how it's sort of good for workers and for those in receipt of the care, receiving care. But I just wondered if we've had any feedback yet from the staff themselves about how they're finding working under the new service that's been launched?
I am not sure if we have had specific staff feedback. I think probably this first sort of forty-five months has been very much sort of embedding the new providers of the city into the way that Sheffield works, working with our social workers and our social work teams to set up those communications and ways of working. And Jo might have mentioned it for a question a couple, but sort of working together around reviews and the best practice for people. And John, when he was talking about workforce strategy and the ethical care charter, we've, we've done some sort of pre-work actually, pre-the-contract going live around, particularly around how staff felt in terms of having fixed contracts as an offer versus what can be known as zero hour contracts. But sometimes they can be very exploitative and sometimes they can be a benefit to the person, so. And there was a bit of a split response on there. What we did know when in the run-up to the service going live was that when we did our sort of citywide drop-ins, we got a really big turnout actually from care working staff, including people who were in Sheffield on overseas sponsorship licences, and there were lots of questions. And so some of that feedback has informed the workforce strategy and our intention from January to do drop-ins again, to try and also for people in receipt of care, but to try and reach the workforce in ways that might be more accessible to them. So I'll note that down as something to bring back in the future, definitely.
Thank you so much. Council Mills?
Thank you, Jo. So yeah, about the care suites, Mubarak, I just really, I don't know how far you can go on this today, but I'm, I'm, maybe I'm jumping the gun, but I'm really interested to know where, how and where these are likely to actually physically take shape. So all the theory is there, but I mean, do we have, do we have sites set aside for this? Is there stuff in the local plan that accommodates these plans for care suites? Are they going to serve different areas of Sheffield? So much that in, in getting ahead if I can on how they'll physically pop up.
Thank you. Right, okay, fine. Sorry about that. Okay, so yes, to, to answer your question, Councilor Wilson, I think in terms of sites, yes, we've had several conversations with housing associations, including our own housing department. And funny enough, only this morning, I went to look at a site with a, a care provider who is interested in diversifying into this space as well, because this is definitely, definitely the future in terms of transformation care. But I think what we would do is, in order to attract potential providers and land, we would do an open, fair and transparent procurement exercise that would be, you know, inviting providers, both on care and developers, to put forward proposals that then we would consider through the, using the appropriate procurement channels.
So I, I get the impression that these, these will be dwellings for rent. Has there been a discussion about whether that's social rent?
Yes, it'd be social rent, and our target is to invite registered social landlords. So we're able to draw down the entire D W P benefit from, from D W P. So because we, we, we'll be looking at exempt rent, people with complex care. So in order to ensure that we, the council benefits and doesn't in any way, shape or form is disadvantaged, we, we will ensure that they are registered, registered social landlords, yeah.
Council Dwyer?
Yeah, mine was on, picking up on the care suites and the difference between them and, say, the extra care facilities. Because I know in my own ward, there's a look at independent living facility being built that's being modelled on Buchanan Green. And I was just wondering what the difference is between those two and what the intention is for the one in my ward. And then on the overseas workers, that outreach. I was just wondering whether we've been looking at country of origin and outreach into community organisations and churches that the workers of this city might be going to, and whether that's a way of reaching them?
Thank you for that, Council Dwyer. Yeah, very good question, what is the difference between care suites, extra care, and even care homes? I think if you were to look at the evolution of care, the next, the care suite is the next thing in that space. Because we, we know people want more, more choice, greater control, greater independence, more rights. And a tenancy-based model offers that. And I think extra care in its current shape and form, I've sort of attempted to move into the care suite space. But because the modelling and the infrastructure and the, the way that the service is commissioned has never allowed that to happen. So you'd, the, the care suite model would be commissioned both with a planned and unplanned sort of water basis. So it allows people to have both planned care as required, which you get in extra care, but the unplanned care that is also financially viable in a, in a setting that allows people to, you know, the care could be shared as well as provided individually. So it's, so it's the modelling that's really key. And the other thing I think is to ensure that we tackle or we access other income. People in, in care suites will be able to tap into other benefits that they may not get in traditional models. And that will give them more disposable income to also have a more fulfilled life.
Catherine, are you going to take the second part of that question?
I am, yes, only to say that that's really helpful and really a good idea actually, and has made me think again that I'll talk to John after this meeting because it links to another question that definitely came from that side of the room about how we work with different communities in Sheffield in terms of just workforce recruitment and retention more generally. So two birds with one stone there, thank you very much.
Thank you, so I am going to go to the recommendations that are on page three hundred and twelve. There are six again. And there are six again, so note the work and the way on the fresh in the market position statement for twenty-five, twenty-six. Now the progress made on our living and aging well commissioning strategy included in transition to our new model to, to home care, the care and wellbeing service. Approve commissioning intentions for living and aging well, including the intention to progress a care suites model of provision. Approve a contract variation with CareWatch to deliver Brunswick Gardens extra care provision. Note the ongoing work to meet our duties under the CARE Act 2014 to ensure market sustainability with regards to quality assurance and fee rates. And request that the strategic director of adult care and wellbeing continues to bring regular commission strategy updates to the adult health and social care policy committee. Thank you. And we're moving, thank you so much, Mubarak, Catherine, and we're moving on to the last item. Kelly, it's your turn now. Item sixteen. This is the adult early intervention and prevention strategy and update on delivery plan.
Thank you. So Kelly Kowalski, Assistant Director for Home First. I do feel like being at the end of the agenda is helpful, because I think this is the gift wrap that just kind of covers a lot of the things that have been spoken about today. And so it's just to provide an update of early intervention and prevention in line with the priority six of our strategy delivery plan. The paper just sets out that prevention is really key to everything that we're doing, and it runs through everything that we've clearly identified today as part of today's meeting. And it's the key to enabling us to reduce, prevent and delay people requiring further ongoing care and support as per our duty under the CARE Act. It also needs to play a consideration ongoing throughout their entirety of either early access to services or all the way through into our specialist services, there are always opportunities for prevention. And so since November two thousand and twenty-three, we've worked together, myself and Martin Smith, to look with the system across how we can embed the early intervention and prevention approach. We've identified that this does support us to achieve improved outcomes for people, and it also helps us to deliver a key number of benefits towards the adult services. So aligned with partners and the partnership plans and strategies, the paper just sets out that our aim is to deliver good health, wellbeing, enablement and improve our offer around carers and workforce, which again, we've heard about today. So from a leadership and governance point of view, we do have a new structure in place, which includes myself, although I've been here a year already, which has flown by. And again, I refer to Martin, who is in a joint post with our ICB. And really, our role is to co-design and co-produce a plan, and that will set how, will set out in the next couple of months about how we aim to achieve the, the things that we are looking to identify as a system across all of our areas, and also to put some timescales against some of those and really get people's buy-in, so from across all organisations. So we want to refresh and review as well our section seventy-five agreements, and that's going to be with a key focus on early intervention and prevention, and setting out some really clear targets about how we'll measure the impact of that. So prevention, some of the work that we've been undertaking more recently, people will be aware that we've developed new leisure partnerships, and that's really helpful. We've got plans to refresh the ten-year plan, and we will be working much more closely as well, I think, with our neighbourhoods and with communities, who will play a key role in some of the work that we're aiming to do in the future. So what we're aiming to do is to close the gap in length and quality of life that we know some of our local people do experience. Some of the public health initiatives and priorities around this, some of our key ones really will be around reducing numbers of people smoking, some weight initiatives, improving health for local people, reduction in alcohol use, high blood pressure, and I made a note earlier about the comments around dementia and our offer around early intervention and prevention and better signposting to information and advice. But overall, we're just aiming to promote positive health, health and wellbeing outcomes. So section seventy-five is made up of nine schemes, of which within that, there's seven programmes, and we are, we've just updated the delivery plan, and there's lots of work going on in all of these areas, but again, some of which is covered today. And so the first focus is around unpaid carers, equipment and adaptations, which Janet gave an update on, and I know I regularly attend committee around that. Technology and tech-enabled care is going to be some of the key focuses for us in the coming months. Lots of really exciting work happening in that space, including the use of AI, which I'm sure we'll come back with in the new year. And a focus as well on Home First, which is part of my workforce change, and that's about bringing our targeted services together to have a more focused approach to early intervention prevention. Falls prevention linked to citywide care alarms and our wider offer around that, and also a focus on promoting independence with our providers. And that really is around our care and wellbeing contracts, which we know we've recently launched, linking in with our personal assistants, and also just to make a final reference to the work that we're doing around optimised care, which will look at how we work with people to, again, reduce, prevent and delay through the delivery of a new approach to moving and handling.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Just keep in mind that I will have to ask for it. Yeah?
Thank you, I'll be really quick. Thank you so much for your report. I just wanted to clarify, in terms of the refresh of the, the strategy, which sounds great to bring it in line with the council plan and city goals and everything, that's sounds really positive, but I just wondered what the timeframe for that was, and just what that looks like practically in terms of the next steps, and when will that come back to committee?
Sorry. So I'm working with Martin on that, so Martin is the lead for that. Unfortunately, Martin's not been able to be here today, but I am aware that he's got a plan in place. I believe that he'll be coming back with some timescales as part of a committee paper that we're bringing in February, so it might not be a rounded product by then, I wouldn't imagine it would be, but I think we'll be able to give you some really clear timescales into the new year, if that's okay. I don't want to make a promise that I can't keep.
And I just want to clarify that Martin Smith is the Assistant Director of Transformation, not Council Martin Smith. So I'm going to take, look at the recommendations. There are four. We, the, the committee notes the progress in implementing the early help and prevention arrangements to prevent, reduce and delay the onset of social care needs, endorses that the refresh of the adult social care strategy, living the life you want to live, will continue to encompass and be the adult early help agency, agrees to the co-design and co-production of a broad partnership-based adults prevention and early intervention delivery plan that will delay how the CARE Act, I'm sorry, detail how the CARE Act two thousand and fourteen duties to prevent, reduce and delay the onset of social care needs is achieved across the local authority and its partners. And number four, request that strategic director of adult care and wellbeing provides an update in six months on delivery of the programme. Are people all happy with that? So another one that is unanimous, and thank you, Kelly. And this concludes today's business, and the next meeting, meeting of the Adult Health and Social Care, Care Policy Committee will be held on Wednesday, the eleventh of December at ten AM. Thank you, everybody.